Mayor Baker, thank you very, very much for convening this multi-city collection of policymakers at a very important time. I have never participated in a four-city city council meeting before, so this is a first for me, and I suspect it may be a first for many of you. And what is really special about this is that this is a great example of cities working together for the common good and not just what is good for an individual city or jurisdiction. Because over the years, I've come to learn that by working together and forming these kinds of relationships pay off with benefits. And the ability to speak with one voice about critical transportation and transit projects certainly carries greater weight. I would guess that just about everyone sitting around the table here this evening is a strong transit supporter. Because things aren't getting better, any better out there. And it's not just the 522 corridor, but it's the I-90 corridor, which I'm probably more familiar with, the I-405, I-5. And the Puget Sound Regional Council periodically updates a briefing about every six months, and the title of that briefing is called "Stuck in Traffic." So this evening, you are going to hear from Sound Transit staff about some of the planning that's ongoing right now. But I just want to say that the path that we're embarking on with Sound Transit III is a bold regional plan. The Board is contemplating major investments in both light rail and bus rapid transits to include an expansion of Regional Express and heavy rail, the sounder that we operate. This bold plan would not only complete the regional spine, but lay the groundwork for other high-capacity transit and new technologies as traffic gets worse and our population continues to grow. Just imagine, and I imagined this this evening, as I got in my car in Issaquah and drove to Kenmore, leaving at about 5:00 in the evening and the peak of the PM peak, and I imagined getting on a light rail vehicle in Issaquah, going down the I-90 corridor to Bellevue and to Totem Lake, and then jumping on high-capacity transit from there to Kenmore. And that would have been a big improvement over what I actually experienced this evening. So what we're talking about is the future of the region. And for someone like myself, I probably will not see, you know, the build-out of the system plan that eventually the voters will have an opportunity to vote on in November of this year. But certainly, my grandkids will, and my great-grandkids. So it's time, really, to, you know, plan for the future. And what we're talking about this evening is a good start to identifying the things that are important to the Puget Sound region, because we were late in doing that. The projects that you've been advocating for in the 520 corridor, on the east side and at 145th, would connect the communities north of the lake and could really provide a new east-west connections that's not only vital to your cities, but to the region. And I can tell you, Mayor Baker is not bashful about talking about that, because he sits in the front row at Sound Transit Board meetings and continues to strongly advocate for what this group is all about.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. And I just want to make it known that we were joined by Mayor Bernie Thomas from Woodinville and Acting City Manager Dick Zace, where we're certainly glad you could be here. And if you haven't noticed, this is the home of the Yellow Shirts and the 522 Transit Now Coalition. So, anyway, Councilmember Balducci.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. And thank you, Kenmore, and all of you for hosting this meeting. I do think it's a historic meeting. I can't think of any time this many local elected officials got together in this region, ever.
And talked to each other.
And we're all advocating for something similar. I mean, it's astounding, really. I want to echo your comments, Mayor Baker, about the need and why the time is now. We know that there is a huge amount of growth. We've been experiencing a huge amount of growth. And if your city is like my city, the people are feeling it. They're feeling the growth. It's a great problem to have, lots of great jobs and people coming and wanting to be in your region, but there are these impacts, and traffic is probably foremost among them. And we're expecting a million more people and a million more jobs by 2030. So this is the time when we have to make the investments to try to give people an alternative. We know that your cities will absorb a lot of this growth in the next 20 years. And that, like cities around the region, that you're planning for density, you're planning for growth. There are some actually very innovative and forward-looking plans happening in this part of the region. We, the Transit Agency, our job is to serve those designated growth areas, and that's us. I mean, we were told if we build it at the city -- I'm having a hard time with hats, by the way, when I say "we," sometimes I still think of it like a city person. We were told if -- I've only been a county person for, what's today, the 12th? 12 days. So, you know, the cities, we were told, if you build it, the transit will come, the transportation investments will come, and this is what that looks like. So it's really time to start making those next big slug of investments. We really need a robust mix of high-capacity transit. A lot of it's trains, not all of it is trains. We have to make sure that the system works for everywhere it goes and that it all works together. The ST3 plan should be, I believe, big enough to include all of the priorities that are needed to make a complete transit system. And that's what you're advocating with us here and have been advocating at the Board today. I want to say just a few words about what we've been trying to do as east-side Board members. Your three east-subarea Board members at King County at Sound Transit are myself, Mayor Butler, and Mayor Marchioni from Redmond. And we started early. We decided to take the bull by the horns a little bit with this planning and try to put together an east-side portion of the overall package that we could advocate for and sort of rally support around. What we did was, we looked at what was happening with ST2. ST, obviously, Soundmove created the starter line north-south. ST2 will extend that and then create East Link to Bellevue and just a little bit into Redmond, Microsoft. And we don't call it that, but the Microsoft Station. And what we need to do in ST3, we decided, is we need to start connecting locations outside of the main spine to one another, locations on the east side, connecting the north of the lake. And that we wanted to start to see that network that really knit us together and didn't treat this like just sort of a east-west, north-south, because the connections are more diverse than that, really. So we've been working on that, and I think that philosophy really mirrors well what you all are putting together and attempting to do, trying to connect the north communities and the east communities with the high-capacity investments on the west side. So I really see what you're talking about, those three investments, types of investments you talked about, Mayor Baker, are very compatible with what we've been trying to do. And so I have a great deal of optimism that we'll be able to find a path that works for all of our jurisdictions. So I guess I'll just stop there and say that, you know, again, I'm really grateful, and I think I speak on behalf of the Board for Sound Transit, we are really grateful that you have done this work, that you have pulled together this advocacy. It's eager to be commended on it. It's a lot of work, but it's very helpful to inform the draft package. Ultimately, what we want is to put something in front of the voters that we can all look at them and say with great confidence, "You should adopt this. This will mean something to you." And I hope that that is one of the outcomes of tonight, is that we're able to say, "We know the direction that we ought to be going as a group with this part of the region." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Balducci. I also want to say that Mayor Marchioni wanted to be here tonight, but he did have a prior engagement, and his mother just was out of surgery, I believe, yesterday. So she's well, everything's fine, but he just could not be here, and I know he wanted to. Next is a Sound Transit III overview and process with Rick Elgin-Fritz.
Well, terrific. Thank you. I'm told the PowerPoint doesn't work, and that's fine. Sometimes it's okay just to talk. Oh, my goodness. No sooner than I say that.
Just say the magic you hold.
Indeed. That's hilarious. I was getting ready just to riff a little bit. So it's looking around the room and echoing the comments of our Board members, this is an amazing gathering. And it's State of the Union night, so I'm sort of compelled to wonder which of your colleagues is stashed in a secure location. God forbid the roof falls down. Somebody would have to make all the decisions in this corridor. Anyway, I was going to start with a little story, absent the PowerPoint, but I think I'll tell it anyway. I've been at Sound Transit now for about 15 years. And I came in in 2001, when Joni Earl was hired to help put the agency back on a footing to deliver the original voter-approved plan. And one of the first people I met when I first started there was a gentleman named Jack Crawford. And I think many of you know Jack. He was a wonderful man and a great Board member. And he was one of the policymakers who, at the time, had a big influence over me and over my staff, and working with the community to work through some very difficult issues. And I remember one night in particular, we had a public meeting down in Seattle, and it was about the future of the light rail project through the Rainier Valley. And this is going somewhere, I promise. You know, he sat through about four hours of public comments from citizens. He was the only Board member available and who was willing to show up that night to listen to the community talk about their concerns and their frustrations and their opinions about the light rail project. Should it be built or not? Should it be in a tunnel? Should it be on the surface? Was it going to hurt the community? How was it going to change the community? And he sat there, and he listened to that feedback and made the community feel heard and played through and supported the eventual implementation of that project. And he did that not just because he thought it was the right thing to do, but because the voters had acted on a vision to start a regional transit system. And he knew that at some point, that system was going to grow beyond that project and reach out into the other parts of the community. And so here we are today, and the regional transit system and the debate about how the regional transit system should grow has arrived back in the 522 corridor. Sound Transit is poised to have a very big year. It isn't just the year of putting the ST3 plan together. If you flip to the next slide, this is the starting point for the ST3 plan, and this is a schematic of the ST2 plan, with dates shown for each of the light rail projects that will be delivered under that plan. We are under construction and poised to open the University Link Line and the Angle Lake Extension south of Sea-Tac Airport. We are poised to break ground on the East Link Project, taking light rail to the east side. And we are under construction and have tunnels bored two-thirds of the way from the Northgate Mall to the University of Washington Station. Linwood Link will be the next one to break ground the year after next, and then Federal Way will follow. So this is really the starting point for the ST3 plan and the ST3 debate. I'm going to move -- this is a picture of the University Link Project. I won't dwell on this too much. I think everybody knows that this is a three-mile project, adding two stations to the system. We worked very hard to deliver this project, but also very hard over the past year with King County Metro to help redesign the northeast Seattle bus network to complement this investment and to change the way people from the whole east side of the city and points north will be able to access downtown. So this is the next step toward the 522 corridor for the light rail system. Let's move ahead, if we could. The Angle Lake Project, the population growth you know about. I'm not going to dwell on these, because I know we want to talk about the 522 corridor. But before Karen jumps in, a little bit of an orientation to our schedule for decision-making. This shows last year and this year, we actually have been working on this almost three years now, three and a half years. We started by updating our long-range plan in 2014. I'm showing the 2015 bar here, because this is where the real action really started in this corridor and other corridors around the region. The Board asked the public what it wanted to see, studied in the ST3 plan, went through a lengthy public involvement process early last summer, and generated over 25,000 public comments, which is the most we had ever seen on any public process, on any project we worked on. And I spent 13 years in the federal government, and the most public comments I ever saw on an issue was about 8,000, on whether to remove dams on the Snake River. So, you know, the public is engaged and interested, and out of that process grew the ST3 candidate project list. And those are the projects that the Board asked us to study and analyze and prepare for their consideration for including in the ST3 plan. And the 522 investments that we're going to talk about tonight are on that list. So the calendar has turned to 2016. We're at the beginning of the end, as far as determining the content of the ST3 plan. Our Board is considering the projects. We presented them in a workshop in December prior to the holidays. The schedule we're on right now has the Board identifying a draft ST3 plan in March and putting that out to the public and to the jurisdictions to react to through the April and May timeframe, after which they'll take all that feedback in, determine what refinements should be made, and finalize the ST3 plan in June of this year. That would then give way for all the political funding business that has to occur after that. But the goal here is to be on the November 2016 ballot. The next slide shows a few of the Board's core priorities. They asked us to consider when evaluating the projects. I won't go through all of these. Some of them are what you would expect in terms of completing the regional spine, prioritizing corridors of high ridership, making sure we're connecting the region's centers, population and employment centers. But they also added a few other important considerations, which I think mark how the ST3 process is different from the ST2 and the Soundmove processes. They've asked us to take a more granular look at system access issues, at transit integration, at land use and the synergy that exists between high-capacity transit investments and transit-oriented development. And they've also asked us to look at social equity issues. Everybody in this room who's been in public service knows what it was like managing through the Great Recession and what the impacts of that were, not only on our agency's ability to deliver services, but on the public and the populations we serve. And while we've come roaring back, and the economy's doing great, not everybody is benefiting proportionally. So the Board wants us to be thinking about that as we're looking at these investments. And then finally, to set the table for ST4. We shouldn't be naive enough to think that ST3 is the last ballot measure, although it could be. But the population growth we expect to see isn't a myth, it isn't a fantasy, it is happening. We've seen it happen over the past decade and a half, and we've seen it show up in our ridership, King County's seen it show up in their ridership. And the fact that it took me 76 minutes to get here tonight shows that it's happening right now. So these are the criteria that the Board identified that we then convert into evaluation measures for all of the projects. I am going to turn the presentation over now to Karen Kitces. Karen is our manager for long-range planning. She's led the effort to update the long-range plan and analyze all these projects. She's going to run through the projects that are under consideration by the Board for this corridor. And time permitting, Mayor, if you'd like, we can go through the projects that are also under consideration for the whole east side, but we'll defer to you on that, depending on how much time we have. So thank you for listening, and I'll turn it over to Karen.
Good evening. Good evening. Oh, there we go. Hi. My name is Karen Kitces, as Rick mentioned. We have been working very diligently over the timeframe that Rick showed. There's also some other ST staff here, including Kathy Leota, who is a lead for this corridor and has been working with jurisdictional staff. And it's been a great opportunity to work collaboratively on that effort. So as Rick mentioned, the corridor for 522 and for 145th, we have designated in our ST3 candidate project list that our Board adopted in October and told us to go study further, as separate projects. But really, they work in tandem together. And so we're going to look at some of the aspects of these as a whole corridor and then look more particularly at different elements. This slide shows the 522 BRT connecting to 145th. On 522, the project, which is seen in the bottom left-hand picture, would include connecting and completing business access transit lanes. And as I've gone around different places over the last week, I've had to explain what those are, but I think here we can probably see some. And so this would allow buses the opportunity to continue around the lake and either east or west to make connections. Here, the connection would be at 145th and then continuing to the light rail station. We have two options on 145th. One is a little bit more capital-intensive, and that shows up within option two. And then option one is a little bit lower capital-intensive. And the difference in those is, on 145th, for the more expensive option, we would be looking at adding bat lanes for the length of that corridor from the light rail station to 522. The other option, option one, would look at adding more limited improvements, queue jumps, intersection improvements, that would still enable buses to kind of get ahead of traffic and wouldn't require as much right-of-way. There are some consistent things that we see when we look at this corridor. The ridership is a strong market, and it is fairly consistent between the two options, between the lower capital and the higher capital option along 145th. And that's because the travel times are similar. The greatest length of this corridor is on 522. And so once you get on 145th, that's a smaller segment, and so the travel time is a little bit less on that part. Like other projects that we have within the ST3 candidate list, these are representative. And by that, I mean that it is our job to look at potential scope elements and cost them out accordingly. To a lesser extent, on this type of project, since we know the roads that would be looked at, but there are still functions that would happen in more detail once we get to project development, which would happen after a successful ballot measure, similar to work that's going on right now in Federal Way and Linwood Link, as y'all are probably familiar with, with alignment decisions to continue Linwood Link further north. For a little bit more information on these, as I mentioned, we have a little bit of a lower capital and a higher capital for 145th. And some of these, they're not meant to be completely exclusive of each other, but it is to provide an opportunity for our Board to kind of look at what are some of the trade-offs that can be considered on this smaller segment of this overall corridor. Throughout all of this corridor, we're looking at 10-minute headways. This project is similar to a lot of work that's been going on with the City of Shoreline and some of the concepts that that city has advanced. And also, within this project, there are opportunities that we could look at for project delivery, once we got to that part of the ST3 plan, following a ballot measure next year, or this year. The higher capital option, one of the differences here, as I mentioned on the first slide, would be the extension of bat lanes along the duration of 145th and then one additional station. 522 would complete the gaps in bat lanes. There are anticipated to be three parking garages also operating at 10-minute headways. We really see the opportunity on the 522 connecting to 145th as a chance to leverage investments that have already been made. A lot of investments made by individual jurisdictions to extend bat lanes along this corridor. Sound Transit is not the only transit provider that operates along this corridor. And so improvements that we make can also be utilized by King County. This also provides a key corridor where integration and looking at service provision and really trying to maximize that for the efficiency dividends that have been talked about with Chair Constantine or Executive Constantine over the last year, as we've been working together with King County. So as a corridor together, it would provide that direct connection to light rail and also finish off other investments that have already been done along the corridor. So at this point, I would just want to check in. We have a few additional slides where we can talk about other projects on the east side, or we can stop here and talk more about 522.
You want to talk about some of the east-side projects? Is that what you indicate? Yes.
If that would be your preference.
Yeah, just briefly.
Sure.
We're trying to concentrate our efforts here on the 522 corridor and 145th, but if you just want to mention them briefly, that's fine.
Sure. This one I'll do very quickly. This would extend East Link down to downtown Redmond. There's already been a lot of work on this corridor, there's a record of decision. So this would continue where ST2 would leave off and continue this corridor all the way to downtown Redmond. We also have a couple of options that would connect Totem Lake towards Issaquah. In this case, it would be via light rail with a potential connection at Wilburton Station to transfer to East Link to serve those who want to continue to Seattle. 405 BRT, which would provide a link between Linwood all the way down 405 on the east side, to a couple of options determined in the south, either at the airport or Burian. We have a couple of options here, and there's a lot of individual detail that I won't go into. But this project would make use of the managed lanes, and as I was coming up 405, and there were a lot of folks on some lanes and not on the others, that would provide, if it's managed correctly and continues to operate, our buses to travel in those lanes to provide service. The main option between these two is how much capital investment there could be to provide additional direct access ramps and other connections along the extent of this corridor. Another project that would utilize the east-side rail corridor could potentially be looking at bus rapid transit from Totem Lake to Bellevue, also with a possible connection at Wilburton. This would also travel off the corridor, or the way that it's been scoped here, would travel off the corridor to serve downtown Kirkland. We had one additional project on the east side, and that was for a potential parking facility, a surface lot in the city of Sammamish. One additional thing that I'll mention, because it does impact this community, is in addition to the BRT projects that I spoke through, it might be hard to see here, but on the bottom-right larger box, there are a number of planning studies, kind of setting the stage, as Rick described, for advancing the next logical steps beyond the spine. And there's a couple of projects here that would be of interest to this community. One is for light rail specifically on 522. That's PO8. And then additionally, there's another project that would look at kind of coverage across the northern part of Lake Washington. So whether that's another crossing across the lake or just how that would connect. So those projects really would work together, or those studies could work together, just to look at the maximum amount of options, and particularly, light rail on this corridor.
All right. So I think next, are there any -- let's just pause here for a second. Any questions? Any burning questions anybody wants to ask at this point? If there are none, oh, Councilmember Sperry.
You should know by now, I always have a question. It's actually a really simple one. You used the term "headways," 10-minute headways. Could you define that for the --
Sure. I'm sorry about that. 10-minute frequency, so a bus every 10 minutes, especially during the peak. That might be refined for off-peak, but very high-level service.
And I guess that was the other thing with 10-minute headway. That's peak-only, not all through the --
Right now, we have it scoped as all day, or during the -- yes, all day. So that might be an element to look at in the future, but right now, that's how it is scoped.
Fine. Any other questions, clarifications? Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to hear from Farron Peers on the SR522 and 145th Street corridor overview and also the ST3 candidate projects, N09 and 10, P8 overview and analysis.
And, Your Honor, if I can interject here while they're
Absolutely.
-- setting up. As you know, the focus of tonight's meeting is for us to look at projects N9 and 10 and P8. And Sound Transit did a great job giving us an overview of those projects. The city of Kenmore has hired Farron Peers to assist us with further analysis of those projects. And also, they've been working on And also, they've been working on an infographic for the 522 and 145th Street corridors. And so, they're going to take a minute here to go over that infographic and share some of their findings on the proposed projects. Kendra Brayland.
One more quick thing. Councilmember Nigel Herbig has just joined us here, and he had the dubious pleasure of driving all the way from Olympia tonight. He's Representative Justin Farrell's legislative aide, so he does this every day. Okay. Thank you.
Well, that's a really hard act to follow. My name is Kendra Brayland, and I'm joined by my colleague Erin Guz from Farron Peers. And we're just delighted to be here on such an esteemed panel tonight. As Rob mentioned, we've actually gotten just a really fun task. We've been asked to dig through the data and really look at, you know, what is it that makes this corridor so ripe for investment? So, we've developed this infographic. I see a lot of you are flipping around. It's been a lot of fun to create. What we're here to quickly talk to you about tonight is, first of all, you know, as we dug through the details of that corridor, you know, what have we found? And we've got some pretty fun statistics that Erin's going to share. And then, I'll turn over and speak specifically to the ST3 candidate projects and just share kind of our top findings and just some of the cool benefits about investing BRT on 145th and 522.
All right. Thank you, Kendra. And yeah, if you want to just follow along, I'll kind of be just walking through the infographic and just touching on some of the highlights with the data that we looked into. So, a lot of this information was pulled from existing data that's out there, model data, pretty much anything that's available publicly and some of our internal modeling efforts. So, just SR522 and Northeast 145th, the corridor by the numbers, you know, where does this sit as far as context with other corridors in the region? You can see every day upwards of 84,000 people are using this corridor. And if you look at the individual SR522 and Northeast 145th, you see it stacks up pretty well with some of the other kind of, you know, bigger-name corridors, Aurora, 15th Avenue, Rainier Avenue, and Bellevue Way. And just one note, obviously, we can all do some math and see that 66,000 plus 41,000 does not equal 84,000. This is purely looking at kind of unique trips that are through the corridor. So, it doesn't double count those people that are on 522 that go on to 145th. And one other note, again, this is people. This isn't necessarily just vehicles. So, sometimes you have car pools, and also, it includes transit ridership. So, as Kendra said, you know, why should we invest in this corridor? And by 2040, and as we're seeing just today, there's some pretty big numbers out there for this corridor. So, this corridor will continue to carry upwards of 20% of all cross-lake trips. It's a major piece for connecting the east side and the west side of the county. We're seeing a big population growth that's forecast along the corridor, upwards of 24%. And all that growth, what does that mean? Our travel demand model, we forecast congestion alone, if nothing is done, will add over 400,000 annual hours of person-hours of delay. And it's kind of a strange concept to grasp, you know, what is a person-hour? But in essence, it's a lot. And, you know, how can we address that? You can address that through a number of investments. But just one alternative to kind of a high-capacity transit investment would be, what if we added another travel lane to the corridor? How much would that cost? Our estimates are upwards of $400 million to expand a roadway that's already somewhat wide. And a lot of the communities in the corridor are really looking towards transit-oriented development, you know, more of a human-scale type of development. So, as you expand the roadway wider, it's really more difficult to try to create that pedestrian experience. And finally, who uses the corridor? This is why it's such a good regional project. We used our model data that we had available, and we also supplemented that with actual GPS and cellphone data that all the cellphone companies collect and provide anonymized to third parties. But what this picture tells us is that a large number of communities utilize 522 in the region. And I think one stat that really stands out, that's tough to see on the screen, but you can see, is that for all trips that go downtown Seattle, First Hill, and South Lake Union, transit carries over 50% of those trips. So, it's a big piece in connecting a lot of these communities to the kind of central job core of Seattle.
Right.
And now, I'll turn it over to Kendra.
Yep. Thank you. And I don't think I need to dwell on describing these projects, because I think Karen from Sound Transit did a great job of that. But, you know, as you can see, we're delighted that there are three really high-quality candidate projects that are being considered right now. And so, I just wanted to kind of share our findings about these kind of three projects. First of all, and it's already been mentioned, but 145th and SR522, this feels like one corridor and one project. A lot of the people that are using this, by thinking of these projects as one, what we're doing is we're connecting South Snohomish County, North King County, and East King, and giving it access to that light rail spine, which is so important. These projects, because so much of the infrastructure that's needed for BRT along the corridor has already been built, they represent an early win. So, this is something that can deliver early rider benefits, years in advance of more capital-intensive projects. Erin showed that heat map that you just saw a few minutes ago, which really showed the reach of who benefits from corridor investments along SR522. It carries, again, 20% of cross-lake trips. I think that's an astounding statistic. But that really kind of demonstrates that this is a corridor that is very important to our region. And so, investing here really benefits a number of communities and really connects those residents of all of these areas to all of the job centers within the Regional Growth Centers within Seattle. And last but not least, you're going to hear from Mark Abisfeld, actually, next, as a rider. But something that he's done for the Seattle Transit Blog that I think is really important and really awesome, was he went through and he looked at what is the cost per rider and kind of compared this project amongst other investments that might be made. And I think that the really neat thing is that SR522 and 145th BRT investments, the cost per rider is $45,000 to $63,000. And that makes it one of the most cost-effective investments that Sound Transit can make. So, the last piece here I'll leave you with, and I know it's hard to see on the slide, although this is within our infographic, but it really kind of drives home how investments, BRT investments in this corridor, really just builds upon what the neighboring communities have been doing for years. Kenmore and Lake Forest Park and Shoreline and Bothell have been building their pedestrian and bicycle systems for years. We've seen lots of investments along the Burke-Gilman Trail, which is going to be able to service this corridor. This corridor also would intersect with, of course, the planned light-rail spine, I-405 investments, and then, as also was mentioned, kind of the TOD that's happening. So, there's a lot here. There's a lot of momentum. So, this is just another piece that builds upon what's already been happening. So, thank you very much. We're happy to answer questions. We'll also be around for the rest of the night.
Any questions right now? So, there has really been a lot of interest in this 522 corridor that affects all of the cities here at this table. We've also had strong interest from the mayor of Monroe. I know he's outside the area, but the Monroe mayor was very, very interested in what we're doing here, because he sees the benefit to his community. And so, there's a lot of implications with what we're doing here today. So, we have been in touch with Jeff Thomas, and he's interested in what's going on here, too. So, with that, key messages, and this is where we're sticking tonight on the key messages. Oh, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead. The yellow shirts are led by Janet Quinn. And she is the chair of the 522 Transit Now Coalition, and also, Mark Abisfeld, who's been very, very active in the 522 Transit Now Committee. Janet.
Thank you, Mayor Baker, and good evening, everyone. I just want to give you my deep, grateful thanks for allowing the 522 Coalition to be here and add to the discussion tonight. I'm honored this evening to be representing the Coalition, part of which you see behind me. When the first Sound Transit 3 Project List was rolled out last summer, we were very concerned that it didn't include any investments along the 522 corridor. And the 522 Transit Now Coalition was formed with the singular goal of making sure that our communities were represented in the final project list. As you've heard, 522 is widely used as the third cross-lake corridor. And along with the connection to the regional transit spine via 145th, it plays a vital role in our region's transportation, as you've seen in the data tonight. We are thrilled that the ST3 project list that was presented to the Sound Transit Board in December included the projects that you've just heard about, the N09, 145th Street, N10 State Route, 522 Rapid Transit, and the light rail study in PO8. So, we appreciate your willingness to come together tonight to advocate for these projects, along with additional parking structures, as Mayor Baker mentioned, that provide access to these transit options. And we stand ready. We just want to be sure. We want to solicit your help in making sure that these projects are on the list when they are finally released to voters in November. And we stand ready to partner with you toward that end. So, our Coalition is strong and growing. Last summer, the Coalition quickly garnered over 400 signatures to present to the Sound Transit Board to advocate for these projects that you heard about tonight. And we continue to add citizens and business leaders in the cities that are represented here, really to advocate and to recognize that these projects are necessary, timely, and a step in the right direction. So, we, like you, care deeply about our communities and about providing better transportation options for our children, our grandchildren, and every single person that uses the 522 corridor every day. And that's why we're so grateful to have you here, just to being willing to work together to make sure that these projects come to fruition. So, again, I just want to extend thanks from the Coalition, from the 522 Transit Now Coalition, for being here tonight to address this topic, this sorely-needed topic. And as you heard, Mark Abisfeld is also here to address you.
Thank you. My name is Mark Abisfeld. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here, Sound Transit Board members and staff, as well as all of the city council and staff members here. I'm very honored to be able to speak to you tonight. I'm here to talk about how these projects will benefit transit users, and I'm a longtime transit user in this area. I grew up in Olympia. I moved to Seattle 10 years ago, fresh out of college, to start my career. And it didn't make any sense for me to be driving downtown and paying to park on an intern salary, so I started taking the bus. And I realized pretty quickly how much money it was saving me to take the bus, so I've been taking the bus ever since. And not only has it saved me money, but it's also saved me a lot of stress. I don't have to think about maintaining distance from the car in front of me and getting off at an exit and whatever. I can just read books instead, which is great. And on a more personal note, my wife and I did ride on the same bus occasionally before we started dating. So, transit's been good. It's been very good to my life in many ways. So, I joined the steering committee shortly after I found out about its existence, because I think transit in this area is good, but we can make it a lot better. And there's a lot of ways that it can really benefit us. So, a lot of people in this region really, or in this area, only use transit to get to work. But with the changes we're talking about making here, we can use transit for more than that. We can use transit to get to other places in the community. If I want to go over to the Lake Forest Park Town Center, it might not be something I really consider right now, if I have to wait half an hour for a bus. But if there's 10-minute headways or less, then it's a more easy decision for me to take transit there. Likewise, if I want to go to downtown Bothell, or if I want to go to Shoreline. Similarly, connecting to the light rail station on 145th opens up a whole lot of destinations that were difficult for us to get to before. So, we could take the bus to the light rail station, then transfer and go south to Roosevelt. Or we could go north and go up to Linwood. And these were destinations that were harder for us to get to in the past that will suddenly become easier with the changes we're talking about here. Also, with better off-peak service, we'll be able to ride transit when it's not rush hour. Sometimes, when I'm going downtown for an event in the evening, it's kind of risky to take the bus, because if I miss it, I might be waiting another hour for the next one. But that won't be a concern anymore, because I'll be able to take the light rail north and then transfer to a bus that'll take me home without much of a problem. So, there's, these projects will be a huge positive change for this community. You won't need to look at a bus schedule anymore. You'll just be able to go to a bus stop and wait a few minutes, and one will be there. There will be new destinations to get to. So, it's really important for this community that we get these projects on the board. I think all of the transit users that are here right now will be very excited and supportive of these projects, and it will help to create many new transit riders in the future. So, the 522 and 145th Street bus rapid transit projects, as well as the light rail study for Building for the Future, will be an incredible asset for this community. And it's something that we can all be very excited about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you to all of the yellow shirts. And I think that's an important, important point, that these projects, although maybe not apparent readily, write-off, is going to be extremely important to all of the communities here at the table and all of our residents in the area. This is all going to offer a greater connectivity to transit. So, keeping that in mind, we are talking tonight about our key asks, our key requests here on the 522 corridor, and that's bus rapid transit on SR522 and 145th Street, structured parking in the 522 corridor, and a light rail study for the corridor. And like I said before, we know that there are many other issues, and we will certainly be involved in those conversations, but tonight, we are limiting it to these topics. So, next, key messages. And the discussion of key messages. The city manager, if you are ready, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. So, one of the next steps is to write a joint letter, and a letter of acknowledgement that Sound Transit has asked us to write. It's due by January 21st. And what we're hoping is that this group of five cities can jointly write a letter that's, number one, acknowledging that these projects are on the list and that they're relatively adequate for us, and that we're advocating for them, they're important to us, and that they're important to us in a variety of ways, which we're going to go over in a minute. So, we're hoping that we can come out of this meeting with, in general agreement, on some key messages that we can take and put in that letter. And my fellow city manager colleagues and I got together and came up with some ideas that might be able to help this discussion. And so, I'd like to pass out some key messages sheets here. And Patty, if you could also put it up on the screen, that'd be great. This is to help prompt a dialogue or a discussion for you tonight. And again, these are some main key points that the city managers of these five cities came up with. And Debbie, do you want to take us through the first three?
Sure. I'm glad to. And again, I'd like to thank the City of Kenmore for hosting us all tonight. I know, on behalf of the City of Shoreline, we really appreciate that. So, one of the key messages that we felt strongly is that these projects, N09 and 10 and PO8, and especially N09 and 10, the 522 and 145th Street, can be early wins. early wins. We talk a lot about the Light Rail Station that will open up at 145th, and it's a mere seven years away. Um, we are thrilled as a community to have that station that's going to be there. And we recognize that it will serve not only those that live in Shoreline, but those that live along the nor, in the north, um, lake cities. And it is a key part of the huge regional investment that is being made by Sound Transit and the voters that have approved that, that expansion. And so, um, we feel strongly that by, um, making the investment here, um, that there's an opportunity to have an investment that will serve at the time that those stations open. The station itself, at 145th, will have a 500-stall parking garage, but as you saw earlier with the, uh, projected boardings, 3,000 to 4,000, parking facilities along the 520 corridor are going to, 522 corridor will be necessary and will be essential in order to have that kind of transit, um, service that will allow people to get to the 145th Station, not through vehicles, um, themselves, but by using transit service and really getting to the various places that were just discussed by the previous speaker. So early win is one of the key messages that we came up with that could be included in that joint letter.
Thank you. The other three key, uh, key messages are up there as well. Uh, and this one about low-cost, high ridership, it's been mentioned already more than once tonight. Uh, cost per rider, uh, is really attractive for, uh, these projects that we're talking about, and there's a good, strong market for ridership. So we think that we have a really good case on that point. Also, multi-jurisdiction support. Need I say more? Look at this group that's here tonight. This crosses sub-area lines. I'm also, um, I'm also impressed with how everybody's coming together on this, and advocating for projects that are outside their own cities. For example, 145th Street, that's more than a city away from us, but it's very important to the City of Kenmore. And everybody here, all the cities here, are advocating for projects that are both within and without their ci, with, without their cities. So, um, I think that's another really strong case to make here. And then lastly, it's similar to the last point, but it is a major cross-lake corridor with, uh, 20% of, uh, the cross-lake ridership. And it connects our communities with a lot of job centers. So with that, um, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for questions or comments, but this is where we need your direction on, uh, these key messages and the main points that need to go into this joint letter that we need to submit by the 21st of January.
Yeah, so if anybody has any doubt, I mean, the three, three, four cities on, uh, here at the table, Woodinville, Bothell, Kenmore, and Lake Forest Park, deal with 522 every single day. And we have counts, and have been verified right now, at 61st Street, uh, and 522 of 60,000 cars a day. So, uh, we know what it's like, and we only know it's going to get worse. So, uh, the messages that we want to deliver and we want to talk about here tonight, um, anybody have any comments? Any questions? Any discussion? Yes?
Thank you. I think in thinking about the messages, one of the ones that, while it's buried in the middle and we greatly, I, I think early win's going to be an important piece for Sound Transit. That visibility is going to be really important. The low-cost, high ridership will have value. But I think there's a piece that you've got buried in the middle there, which is the connection to regional HCT spines. We offer that great shed to two incredible parts of this county and part of this area in huge job centers, both on the east side and on the west side of the lake. And we are really in a symbiotic relationship with those job centers because we on the north end, we've got jobs, we've got education, we've got housing all over the place, but we're not the huge job centers. And we do contribute to those, and, and the fact that right now it is challenging at best to connect the job centers, let alone the recreation, the playtime and the living time that the rest of us want to be able to use the transportation system for. And it really comes down to simple economics, then. You know, we've got a very, very challenging growth projection, we're all trying to meet our housing targets, we know that, that people are coming. The fact that it took so long for folks to get here, well, that's our reality. Um, I was joking with, uh, Mayor Butler, he was talking about the congestion that starts in Issaquah, and he was having trouble getting out of Issaquah. Well, that's where our congestion starts. And it comes all the way up 405 and all the way across 522, and it's just one long congestion line. So the fact that we could, through this process, have one region, one corridor, and have one set of connections, uh, makes it really, really appealing, and that, to me, is a, an important part for, of the message that needs to be there.
Anyone else? Ah, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. And, and just building on what Councilmember Richa said, especially with board members here, these messages are great at describing it, how important this is to our communities and linking the north end of the lake, but it's also important to Sound Transit, right? These are the people who are paying for Sound Transit, and in order for the spine to work, people must be able to get to the spine. And so this, uh, as was talked about at the beginning, uh, this has to be viewed as a network. So it's not just, we, we're not just here saying, please give us the service that we want. We're saying we're committed to having a, a transportation network that serves the whole region successfully. So I think, as we think about crafting a letter, these messages are important to us, but I think it's worth having messages in there for the Sound Transit Board that reinforce the fact that we are building on and supporting their mission to connect the community.
And, yes, Councilmember.
Hi, Philippa Casover from Lake Forest Park. Um, building on what Will Hall said, those of us who campaigned, uh, this year, um, heard from voters very strongly that transportation and congestion are on their minds, and they are really looking for solutions, they're really looking for hope for the future, that the quality of their lives is going to improve. And so, um, I just want to give a shout-out for Lake Forest Park. We traditionally have one of the highest voter turnout rates anywhere in the county, and, um, it would be a good thing for Sound Transit to have Lake Forest Park on your side, so. And we look forward to working with you to make that happen.
Yes?
Just to add to the benefits to Sound Transit, 145th Street Station is in Shoreline, and you've got a 600-stall parking garage planned, which is great. And we, of course, have streets, and you can put some cars on those. But for the most part, if that station is dependent on automobiles driving riders to it, they aren't going to go. So if we want to fill the trains, we've got to get the buses to them. And I don't think it needs to be a key message, but, but really, this is about making the light rail core, the light rail corridor, work, and we need these pieces to make it work.
And I think that's key, the corridor. I mean, we've got to get people from Woodinville, we've got to get people from beyond to the light rail. And when I've got, you know, when we're sitting here as a coalition and we're seeing Monroe interested, they're outside the area, but I tell you what, people in the Kenmore Park and Ride, just a block down the road, from Monroe, park there daily. So, um, it's, it's important that we provide the means to get to these light rail spines. So, uh, bus rapid transit or, or some high-capacity transit is, is sorely needed in the corridor. Yes, Mayor Johnson?
Um, I just want to say that, you were just saying that, um, you know, this goes, when you guys showed that heat map type of thing, and it showed where everybody comes down 522, it was way too small. I have two employees that come from outside of Snohomish and come down this every day. Anybody up that direction wants to go to a Husky game, comes down here. Everybody goes to a Seahawk game, comes on 522. I'm going to thank Sound Transit right now because I almost cried when I saw these projects on your list, because we really need them. Your, your letters, I'm, I'm, I gotta be honest, I own an auto repair shop. I fix cars, I made, my family's been in business since 1949. If I'm here wanting mass transit, you guys got to think about that. I mean, I finally threw up my hands. There's plenty of cars for me to fix, and you know, there's, there's some things that never get talked about. Do you know when a car is the most inefficient? Is when it sits and idles. And all of our cities are getting full of pollution. They're not, and it's not your people, it's not Lake Forest Park, and it's not anybody, it's like it is, it's people from all over the country, all over the state, are parked out here in our, basically sitting in our driveways, idling their cars. And every single car leaks, and I don't care how cool think your car is, it leaks. And that's all going into our streams and our rivers, and there's, it's a big picture. And we need help. Sound Transit, we need help. And there's more and more people coming, and you can look around this room, we could send all layers in the world, but this room shows you how much we care. I know the biggest problem the city, all these cities has is the intersection 145th and, and 522. That's, the intersection is, that's a stop plug on everything. We can build 10-lane highways, but you hit that intersection, it all stops. We're just here because we need help, we're glad we're on your list, we, you can see the support. And I know a lot of the people out there, there's a lot of people from Lake Forest Park, and Philippa here, she could get a group of people that would scare just about anybody, so. But I thank all you guys here. We are all on the same page, we all need each other. Traffic does not know city limits. And we all know that. And we're all here together because, as you know, if you build it, they will come. So if you guys build the train station, they're going to come, we just got to get them there for you. So I really appreciate all the people out in the audience, or appreciate all the electeds and all the staff, because, uh, we all need each other, and I appreciate you all being here.
And so that, that 522 Transit Coalition, that, uh, Now, the 522 Transit Now Coalition, uh, it's made up of people from all over the area. I mean, it's, there's Shoreline people, there's Lake Forest Park people, there's Bothell people, there's Kenmore people, and I, there may even be one or two Kirkland people in there. So, we do have wide-ranging support. This is just not something that we grab some Kenmore residents off the street and said, please come. Uh, no, there, there's people that are very concerned. Anybody else? Uh, yes, Mr. Rose.
Yes, I just wanted to underscore a point that you almost started to make, Mayor Baker, which is, just down the street is, is a Park and Ride, but the Park and Ride is full. Every Park and Ride space along this corridor is full, and, uh, and an important part of these investments, uh, would be those parking structures, uh, and that would keep access vibrant for our communities.
Yes?
Thank you. Mark Phillips, Lake Forest Park. Uh, there's, uh, one kind of element, I guess that that's always been, uh, I found compelling, and that's, that maybe speaks to equity, uh, the word that was used early in the presentation. I think our area, our part of the region, has contributed to making other parts of the regional transportation system work, uh, work better. I'm thinking of 520 Bridge and the increase of traffic that we've, we've seen in this area. Our Lake Forest Park numbers, I think, are 12% increase in, in, uh, in business on, uh, traffic on, on 520. Uh, so, I would think that'd be worth pointing out in a letter, or, or keeping in mind that there is, uh, that these kind of improvements will go a long way towards, towards helping to address, uh, that kind of imbalance that, uh, we perceive.
Councilmember Curtis?
One thing I like about the rapid bus transport is very scalable, so if in theory you fill up every single bus every 10 minutes, you could run them every eight minutes, using the same streets, you could just put more and more people by putting those buses closer together.
Anything else? So, yes, Mayor Ream.
And Bothell's got to chime in here. So I just wanted to point out that the City of Bothell is, is divided across the county line, and our, our county bus system, no offense, um, but the King County bus system and the Snohomish County bus system, there's kind of a DMZ zone between the two, and they don't typically cross it. And it just goes right through the band, like literally through the middle of, of the City of Bothell. So, we, we, we do suffer from, uh, lesser services, I would say, from, from other areas because we are kind of, uh, right on the edge of their service areas, and so Sound Transit is really important to us. Along 522 would be, would be a huge improvement. Uh, Sound Transit's the right body to do it, because it really is hard to get Snohomish County and King County together to really try to make those connections across our communities. So, I really appreciate this big, uh, project on the lit, excuse me, a project on the list, and, um, keep in mind, there's only four cities in the state of Washington that are split by a county, so it's really important to us to have a regional transit system address our transportation needs.
So, the next steps here are, are to have our staffs draft a letter. And the time is getting of the essence, it needs to be in by the 21st, so, uh, that is the next step, that is the next thing that we need to do, and we all need to come to agreement on that. Um, city manager, do you have anything else to add?
No, so based on tonight's conversation, we'll get going on that letter first thing tomorrow, and we'll get it all out and distribute it, and hopefully get it in by the 21st. I also want to point out that we're also, uh, likely to be writing our own individual city letters in addition to the joint five-city letter.
Wonderful. Any more questions? Further discussion? Uh, there's been a request of all of us posing for a photograph. So if we could get everybody, and we need to, where, where would you like us?
Back in this corner? With the flags in the back?
So if we could get everybody to come over here, all the electeds to come up this way, and, uh...
Mayor, do you want to adjourn first?
Yes, I will, but I just want to get everybody idea of which way they're going and how we're going to do this, so. Yes?
No, I, I think it's been said already, but I really want to, um, add our sincere thanks for our council, for you putting this together, Mayor Baker. I mean, this is, this is pretty monumental, and, uh, probably will show up on Facebook, I'm sure, too, but, uh, but I think, you know, to, to have this kind of, um, regional cooperation is, is, is pretty darn amazing, and, uh, I think, uh, unique in, in the region. So, I appreciate your leadership on it.
And, and I thank you, but you know, I certainly can't take the credit for this. I mean, our city manager was really the driving force behind getting a lot of this stuff going, and all the city managers were. I mean, uh, they all pulled together, and so, uh, and I also think it, it says something about us as electeds, and how we talk with each other, and we work with each other, and we all know that we can't go this alone. So, I really appreciate all the compliments and accolades, but it's not me, it's, it's all of us. We could not do this if we weren't all, uh, together. Yet, Mayor Ream?
All right, I got to pile on here real quick. That deflection was good, but I just want to point out that there was an ST3 staff member that told me, because I said, look, we really need something out here, and they said, well, you need to talk to Mayor Baker. And they told me, they told me, the way to get your project to stay on that list through this process is to sit in the front row and do exactly what you're doing. And so I just want to really thank you, I know you're, you don't want to take all the credit, but that is a huge deal, because I can't do that, and I know a lot of people can't that are part-time council members, and, I mean, it's huge, and especially the community group as well. I know it's not just you alone, but, uh, being there and doing this for us is, is huge, and I, I hope it comes to fruition.
And, and I, and I really appreciate that, but again, you know, I, I certainly wouldn't be half-inclined to do this if we weren't all talking and friends and, and working together really well, so I, I truly appreciate the friendship that I have with each and every one of you, and it, it makes a huge difference. So, thank you all very much. Okay, anything else? We're going to join back here in the corner, and with that, we're adjourned.